You're doing great, Jolynn. Just getting some, getting going. So if there's anyone that would be willing to lead us in the pledge and another volunteer to give us a prayer reading or thought, be talking amongst yourselves. And I can see everybody's itching for the opportunity and see it in your faces. Bert, prayer, okay? Anyone for the pledge? Thank you. Okay. I'll get, I'll call you up in just a bit. Thank you for being willing. Hey, Commissioner Gardner, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Beautiful. Yes, thank you. Let's call this meeting to order. All right. Thanks, Jolynn. All right. We will begin this commission meeting on June 19th. It is 2:05 and we will start this meeting with a prayer from Bert Garfield. And then we'll have the pledge and then I'll have you tell us your name when you come up after Bert and we'll get you on the record. Thank you.
Our dear Father, we thank you for this opportunity together, to gather together and discuss the affairs of the county. We ask please bless this conversation to be helpful and productive. We ask please bless Commissioner Sacca and his health condition that he will be blessed with as much health and strength that he can and he'll get good medical attention. We thank thee for those that serve in armed forces and those that are first responders, that they'll be blessed with safety and we thank thee for the community, safety that they give to the community. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bert.
Angela Lacy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and with its whole liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Angela. You, everyone. Okay, we've got a few work session items. Our first one will be an annual report presentation from our friends at USU Extension. Thank you. Thanks.
My name's Ton Betis. I am USU Extension County Director and thank the commission for their time. And we will move through this as quickly as possible. In our agreement with the county, we're required to give an annual report to the commission on our doings and the benefits to the county. And we usually do a follow-up in September, October. So we'll get started. And I'm going to be very brief and we've just tried to pick up highlights from programs just to try to be as brief as possible. But I want to point out that USU Extension has brought in over 3 million in grants that are for programming for county residents in Utah County. Some of these are multi-county, but the majority of the money is spent here. And so for the money that the county funds us with so that we can implement this, you know, just in the grants alone, and this doesn't include volunteer hours or consultancies or anything, not that we're charging that from campus for specialists to come down and help. So from now, I'm going to turn the time over to Jake Hadfield.
As Ton stated, I'm going to be brief as well and just kind of go through a few. So my name's Jake Hadfield. I work with the Agriculture and Natural Resource Group within our office. And so just to give some updates, what's happened the last few months. Every time we come to this meeting, we usually report on farm field days. That's where we bring second graders from all over the county to come learn more about agriculture. And so we do, in the fall, we do the north side of the county. In the spring, we do the south side of the county. And here are just some of our numbers that you can see. We had about 2,400 students come through this last spring. We had over 2,600 attendees. And considering all the volunteers we get and whatnot, we figure that, you know, with the hours, about 1,039 hours, we had a total value of about $32,000 worth of volunteer donated time, which is pretty awesome when you look at that. I think this is just a great opportunity to help teach a lot of the kids in Utah County about our Utah County agriculture, so they can know what's being grown around them and whatnot. And so just a quick update there. One cool thing that we had is we actually had a farrowing crate that was brought in. And you can see in this picture here, kids were actually able to sit around and watch the piglets and kind of look at the sow as well as the piglets during the event. And it was kind of a cool activity they had. I hope I'm not doing, I might be doing that. So just real quick on ag programs, we have the Small Farm Water Quality Grant, which is basically from the Division of Water Quality. We receive $100,000 for that grant. And what it does is allow small farms to be able to apply to improve the water quality on their farm. We know that in Utah County, water quality is always something we're looking at, especially with Utah Lake. And so that's one of the projects that we are currently working on. We also are doing dryland alfalfa research. We're looking through different varieties to see what varieties do the best with dryland. We know alfalfa is a crop that a lot of our producers raise. So we're trying to help them be able to make more informed decisions on what varieties they should choose. Some of the other things we're looking at is alternative forages. One specifically being teff grass, which is what we call a warm season grass. This is an opportunity for farmers to look at using a double crop system where they actually harvest two crops instead of one. And so that's just some of the stuff we're looking for, looking at right now, specifically in the Palmyra area. And last but not least, and I'm sorry, I went through this fast. We're hoping to host the Sustainable Grazing Workshop, which has been hosted all across the state. An opportunity to teach people more about grazing and how to do it in a sustainable fashion. And so with that, that's everything I have. I'm sorry, I flew through that pretty quick. I'm going to turn time over to Gabby now with the Heart Initiative.
Thanks, Jake.
All right. Hi. My name is Gabriella Merza and I am one of the county faculty with the Heart Initiative. It's the Health Extension Advocacy Research and Teaching Initiative, super long acronym. You don't need to, there's no test on that. But basically, if you have not seen me before, I, the Heart Initiative addresses opioid overdose, kind of addresses opioid overdose prevention and addresses opioid overdose crisis that's, that's happening in Utah County and also statewide. My position is a little bit different. I am not funded by the county. I'm fully funded by the state, by the university. So in addition to having county responsibilities, and I do a lot of stuff in Utah County, I also work statewide. So I do a lot of multi-county collaborations. A lot of stuff that I do, I just really wanted to focus on one specific program. My colleague, a USU Extension professor, and Logan and I received a grant from USU Extension, $30,000 grant to do harm reduction trainings. This is basically overdose, we're calling it an opioid overdose response trainings. And these are specifically targeted to groups that address, to address certain trends and needs among them. So for example, our main audience, we work with service industry employees because a lot of times in the service industry, like bars, restaurants, pubs, gas stations, motels. If an overdose occurs at their place of business, they're most likely the first to respond before EMS and other first responders arrive. So being able to train them in how to, how to recognize a potential overdose and then how to respond using Narcan, using CPR, really helps kind of bridge that, that gap and that potential waiting time. We also started working with labor industry employees. For example, coal mining down in Carbon and Emery Counties and then here in any, a lot of the other counties' construction. Because we found that a report, a recent report had come out that construction namely is one of the highest labor industries or the highest labor industry right now that is experiencing overdose from opioids. And partly because of the injuries that a lot of these labor industries experience. And so opioids come as part of their, you know, either prescribed to them and used. And then college students, we're seeing kind of an alarming trend with fentanyl coming in, you know, coming in and being laced into these, these counterfeit pills and other substances that college students are getting online or from their friends and they're trying and think it's one thing and it's not. And so we're seeing overdose rates kind of increasing due to fentanyl. So the groups, like I said, they're trained how to identify and respond to an opioid overdose. And then also participants, the employees get a Narcan kit that they take and keep for themselves. And then the business gets an overdose response kit that has Narcan and some other supplies and materials and resources for them to be able to use. And that's put in a, in a place where any employee can access. So behind a bar, behind an office, you know, behind like the front desk of an office, things like that. So we've done a lot of trainings in, since about December of this past December. So I, you know, we've, we've had around, you know, nine counties that we've reached, including Utah County. So we're, we're just doing, you know, we're, we're trying to get it out as much as possible. We have the grant through the end of this year, but we are able, we're going to keep doing this even beyond the grant. So hopefully we can find funding to help fund these things and buy those Narcan kits. But, but we'll still be able to provide those trainings no matter what. And so, and we're finding that people are using the, that the people who go to these trainings, they're, they're using the naloxone actually. So, which is unfortunate because we're finding people are experiencing overdoses at, at, you know, these, these places of business. But it's also fortunate that they have this education and they're able to respond. So. There's my contact information and you can, you can get to all the cool social media platforms that we're on. And then Cindy Jenkins is our, our other home and community faculty and I'm, I'm going to report for her. And also she wanted to highlight one specific program. And so I'm going to read some notes. I'm going to sound like a robot and I really, really apologize. But I want to make sure I say what you wanted me to share. She has been really active with the Utah Valley Women in Leadership Collaborative. This is actually a part of a statewide women in leadership project, Utah Women in Leadership Project. And so she's taken it kind of to the next level and have a, had it, had it really set in Utah County, kind of have Utah County be a good hub for that. But basically it's an opportunity for, to kind of increase women's role in leadership positions. And so in April, they had an event. They had, you know, over 150 attendees. They had community booths. She's been really involved with the She Can, I Can Initiative. And so that is again elevating women and girls in these positive leadership roles and, and helping them kind of connect with professionals in the communities. They had developed a website, so that's in place. They had also achieved nonprofit status with that, with that collaborative. And so these are their future plans for September, having an event, another event. They are applying for funding and they're also doing a storytelling curriculum for USU Extension. So this is more for, also for, for USU Extension faculty. And storytelling means that it's, it's a way for, for, and even in the collaborative, even these, in these events, they talk about storytelling. But it's really a way for, for a person to tell, the, be able to tell a story of who they are, what, you know, and how it kind of ties to their values and their beliefs and kind of what they can contribute in, to the community and to their family and kind of, you know, looking, looking at those things. So they just had a really good response with the event. A lot of people really enjoyed it and they want to keep being a part of it. And, and people, you know, this is showing that it's building their confidence and their belief in themselves, which is really important for women and girls these days. So these are some funding that she has either received or she's a part of. So she's either a PI, like a principal investigator or a co-PI on these grants. And so she's been able to secure these funding sources this past year. And also her contact information and where she, where you can connect with home and community and also with her on social media. And then I'm going to turn it over to 4H, Emily Heather.
Thanks, Gabby.
All righty. Before we get going, I want to introduce Emily Van Wagner. She is our new STEM and FCS coordinator in the office. We're really excited to have her. Emily started as a state ambassador for 4H, so she's very familiar with the program. We have had an awesome year this year. We received funding to go to two different national events. First was the AYHC Symposium in Fort Worth, Texas. I took our four county horse ambassadors to that. This is an awesome opportunity for them. They get to network with industry professionals. They get to connect for internships. And because of this, I took my group and now Florida 4H plans to replicate our ambassador program in their state. So we're really excited about that. We also got to travel up to Alaska in February and it was freezing. But we survived and we had a lot of fun. We got to tour different equine facilities, do different workshops. This is also another great place for kids to make connections with 4Hers across the nation. So we have had a lot of fun and we are gearing up for summer camp season. We have cowboy camp coming up in July. We partnered with several entities in Wyoming this year to do a collaboration between the two states. And then cowboy camp has been selected for a podium presentation at the national conference this fall. So we're really excited. What started in Utah County is now going to go national. So really fun. And then program numbers, we've had a 23% increase in youth showing horses from 2023 and a 50% increase in youth showing small animals. We also just developed a shooting sports club, which has been long overdue, lots of interest. But we finally got it put into place. For the livestock side of things, this year we had the 100 Years of the Utah State Junior Livestock Show, which was a very big deal and organized by many, many hands. So we're grateful for that. We had 225 exhibitors from Utah County, 60 plus received awards and nine of those received scholarships for, for their education. We also had a team qualify to go to nationals in livestock judging. And they have also seen a 4% increase in youth showing livestock. That's it for the 4H and then Emily will report on her numbers this fall. But we are just so appreciative of your guys' support and all you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Unless the commission has any questions, we're done for now and appreciate the time.
Yeah. Commissioner Gardner, do you have any questions?
No, just wanted to thank you guys for the work you do. As you know, my boys are 4H, are 4H kids. And my son just finished up his term as the Northern Region Ambassador President. They both were able to participate in mock legislature. And my one son that sponsored a bill was able to get that through and passed and everything. I'm really excited to see that you've got an increase in kids showing livestock. I think it's critical as we move forward. And this is why I've worked so hard on the urban farming because I think it's so critical that we continue to produce as much food locally as possible and that we preserve the heritage of our farming community. We are the second largest agricultural county in the state as far as revenue goes. And I don't foresee us being able to preserve that future for future generations without the work that you do and without the 4H program. So 4H is huge there, but then not only that, the extension, right? When I first bought my farm, I took extension classes. And I think the, the services you offer to the local community, the agricultural community, and then even going further with the opioid program for targeting the agricultural community. I just, I can't say enough about the service you do to our community, preserving our culture, ensuring that we have farming and food production locally. It, it goes well beyond the surface of your program and I appreciate all the work you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we got to make sure we find a spot for that 100-year sign that was made for the Junior Livestock Show. That was impressive with the lights behind it and everything, right? I don't even remember who made that, but that was.
I believe Farm Bureau partners with Extension to do that.
Okay. That was cool. Yeah, very cool. The kids love getting their pictures in front of them. So thanks again for all you do.
All right. Thank you again.
Okay. All right. Moving on, Rod Mann is going to give us a review of our five-year budget analysis.
So first I want to thank Rudy for all the work he did. He's the, the workhorse behind the scenes that's made a lot of this happen. I do want to review with you, you want to click to next slide, some of the information, just, you know, that we went through at the offsite budget. And it's been updated a little bit, but this is our general fund history. Green is revenue, red is expenses. You can see that we've had since 2013, a few years where we were in the negative. And if you look at the last four years from 2020 to 2021, you can see there's a steady decline in net revenue. And last year we were down eight, eight to nine million dollars. Now, if you look at our revenue sources, we have three primary revenue sources. Property tax, sales tax and other. And other revenues are county fees, fines, interest, et cetera. And you can see that property tax and sales tax are almost equal and are growing. We had the bump in 2020 and then we reduced property taxes a little bit in 2021. And that's why you see that jump and then it goes down. If we look at it, the revenue sources on a percentage basis, you can see that between property taxes and sales tax, that covers over three quarters of our revenue. That's the next slide. The mic needs to get turned down a little bit. I'll just stand back. No problem. Now if we look at general sales tax revenue, that's right now about a little bit over 50% of our revenue. Next slide. You can see there's two parts to that. There is the darker green, which is the local sales tax that's in unincorporated Utah County that we collect. And then there's the general tax that goes to the whole county. That is somewhat hard to predict growth on that. You can see from 2020 to 2021, we had a really big jump. And then 21 to 22, we had another really big jump. And then last year, we had a much smaller jump, about 3%. So how, how do we guess? This question. I'll go to the next slide. And we have different methodologies we use. One of them takes a look at our annual sales tax revenue on a quarterly basis and says, okay, we just, we're two months behind on sales tax information. We just finished Q1. And you can see that there is some variability there if we go to the next slide. But if we project based on Q1 data and look at the min-max and look at the three-year, seven-year and five-year averages, you can see there's a range of anywhere between 51.3 to almost $57 million. So that's about a $6 million spread. Now our budget is that dash red line, which is 51.7. And if we look at a 12-month rolling average, it's just a little bit above that. If we take the three or seven-year averages with the Q1 data that with the Q one data that we have, we could get to fifty four million. Um, if we do the five year average, we get to a little bit more than that. And then if we look at the maximum based on the history that we could potentially generate, we're almost fifty seven. So we'll know more as the year progresses, but right now we've got about a a six million dollar potential spread, worst case, best case. And if I was a betting person, I would bet we'd be to we'd be between fifty three and fifty four, which is above budget, but we won't know until later in the year, which is why we're always anxious to get that data and 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 look at it. And it makes you know, budgeting a little bit harder. Um, now if we look at property tax revenue, you can see there's uh continued growth except for two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty one, and that's when we had a a tax reduction. Um, but there's slow and steady growth. We have a tool that Bert uses to help calculate tax rates for the county and for the cities. I look back about eleven years and the state's accuracy in projecting the tax rate we need to generate the money that we've asked for. Uh, they're within less than point one percent variability looking back three years. So the number that we have for two thousand twenty four is about fifty uh point something. And we're very confident in that. So we don't need to do a a wide ranging estimate. So the thing that affects that a little bit is um, if there's a bad economy, then people delay paying their taxes and that does affect what we collect. But the count, but the state accounts for that too. So they do a really good job. In fact, their I T and their their services are generally to be commanded. So we're pretty confident about that number. Um, and now I'm going to turn it over to Rudy to walk through the details of our five year forecasts, how we put it together, what our concerns are and and where do we think it looks like for the funds out there? There's still some things that we don't know. Um, we'll sort some of those out in the next week or so, but we're pretty confident on what we have. Thank you.
As soon as we got the budget done, the twenty four budget finished, we started on a a new project to have a multi year forecast. The county's never had a multi year forecast. And um, it was interesting. I was at a national conferences last week and we're not alone in that. But the the but there's a a huge um impetus by by the um the G F O A that everybody have at least a three year forecast and probably a three to five year. You know, and we've gone forth and put together a five year forecast. Once you start getting past two to three years, it becomes much more nebulous. You can project some things out ten years, but it's not really that great and accurate. So but we plan to take this and and update this throughout the year. And we're, this is going to be a rolling item. It's not going to be static. So we'll be able to update this, you know, several times during the year, depending on different folk, different uh forecast thoughts and what we think are happening with our economy. Uh, we have several areas of concern that came into pre- preparing this forecast. One is that we don't, as Rod mentioned, we don't have a real good finger on our um sales tax growth because we don't have any control over it. And the thing that makes it a little bit more difficult is we we get our reporting on our sales tax revenues two months after they occur. So for instance, all of the January sales, we don't get that information until March. And so we're always behind, so we don't know exactly where we are. Uh, one of the other concerns is the high inflation that we've been having. I've been very, I I I've been looking at constantly at projections from the Federal Reserve and others and nobody's, nobody is um thinking that these rates are going to come down really fast anytime soon. So we're probably going to be in the same situation. And so we've implemented, we've included a lot of these things in our forecast. We found that the contracts that are renewing this year, most of them are increasing about five to six percent, which is higher than normal, like, you know, I T contracts or whatever. It used to be about three to five percent, but it's actually been up to five to six. We've had large increases in motor pool, which has increased the cost um for the sheriff's department and others. And part of that is because we shortened the life cycle of those vehicles to three years from five. And so we're replacing it every three years. So we have a higher cost. You know, the the cost is divided over three. Plus, we've had significant inflation in the cost of vehicles. Um, we used to be able to buy these vehicles for thirty five, forty five thousand. Now they're more like forty, fifty five, sixty five thousand fully loaded. And it and it's difficult. Um, we've had market salary increase and it's interesting because the latest stuff I've been hearing from the Fed and others is that they're still anticipating that we're going to be having a bit of inflation in salaries. And we won't know, we're we're projecting some numbers, some about four point nine percent, I think, for the coming years. Um, benefit increases are coming up. We've been fairly lucky that we've been stable with our health benefits. But we know that there's going to be about a six and a half percent increase coming up um next year. We've been trying to put together information where the council, the commission was very um wise in developing a C I P program a few years ago, wherein we can, we we're planning for the replacement of capital or additional of new capital items such as the the um emergency services building that we're building down at the sheriff's department. That's been needed for a while. So we we put these things into the forecast. We know that the cost of the public defenders have gone up significantly over the last few years and the cost of capital defense has gone up quite a bit. Departments have been trying to hold things very, very tight, but they have, you know, the the reality is when when costs are going up, you can't hold all of your your costs and your budgets really tight. So we know that there's going to be increases in there. Uh, we know that we're probably going to have to issue some bonds in the coming years to do things like um build a a new public works facility. And we have to weigh in that the cost of bonding now versus the cost of waiting to a lower rate when maybe the construction costs are higher. We also have an issue going on right now. Being the fastest growing county in Utah, we have a lot of demographic changes, which puts stress on the um sheriff's department, the health department, all of those services that we provide to the general um area. We've had increases in the attorney's office and they've they've opened up a couple of new courts. And because of that, we have to provide attorneys to staff those courts, which also requires us to provide bailiffs in the from the sheriff's department. And then there's always a space that needs issues. So we put together the five year forecast and basically we we built based upon the twenty four budget. That was the, that was our baseline. From that, we excluded one time items. And we, you know, we we pulled those out because those aren't going to be ongoing things that we're going to want to be budgeting. We know that that some of them will occur in the future, but we'll deal with those as they come. But for now, we took those out. We projected a five percent um property tax increase and a sales tax of three point five percent. You know, in all of my years of budgeting, that would be a great number, three point five percent. When I came here a few years ago, we're saying twelve, fifteen percent sales tax growth. That was awesome, but we can't bank on that. Last year, we projected about eleven percent. We ended up at three and that was a major issue for the county. So we're being conservative in that and putting three point five percent um in there generally. Um, the salaries were, we got estimates from from H R um of what the costs are going to be over the next five years. We we've used some growth factors. We use some historical growth factors in in preparing the budget, the projections for the material supplies and services. We we omitted capital costs, the departmental capital costs from the five year forecast. Because those will be, have to be dealt with as they come along. But we do have money in there for the 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 smaller items, non capital um stuff that's, you know, the five thousand dollars or less in the seventy four twenty. We know that I S F costs are going to increase and we've tried to layer those in. I think we're going to need a little bit more work to come to nail those down and get some better numbers in there. Investment income, we don't know where that's going. This year was a one of the highest years investment income we've ever had. I hate budgeting for investment income. Because if you budget too high, you're the goat. If you budget too low, people say, well, why, right? But it looks like from what I read now that the that the Fed rate is not going down, at least for next six months. And so we can anticipate that investment income will be a little bit higher. We want to pull in the demographics and everything. Um, I'm going to share a spread, the spreadsheet that we've put together on this. Um, all right, where'd it go? There it is. That the actual spreadsheet we've been using for the five year forecast. This is our first ever attempt to do this. So while I think it's it's a great step forward.
Wait, hold on, sir, real quick, Rudy, Rudy, I have a quick question. Before you go on to that, before I forget. Why did you choose a five percent increase in uh in property tax, considering that our historical increase has been around three percent?
It's been a little bit between four and five the last couple of years. Um,
it's it's averaged um just around five percent, give or take a couple of tenths, actually. I've I looked at the last third.
Over which years?
Between twenty eleven and and twenty uh twenty twenty three. And also included in that, the twenty twenty four projected one.
Well, and I thought that the projection that we just got was about a one and a half million dollar increase off of like a fifty six million dollar amount, which was closer to three percent.
It is, it is a three plus percent, correct?
Yeah.
Right. So like, so our current numbers are closer to three percent, but we're projecting five percent for the five year forecast. That's um, in one year, that's not going to be that big of a deal because it's going to be, you know, around a million dollars, but over five years.
Correct.
That increase staying at five percent instead of three percent, I think we're overestimating what we're going to receive in in property tax.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing me this up. And and this is what we know that we want you guys to look at these things. And if some of the assumptions are not what we what we probably should do, we can adjust them. And and that's what we want to do.
Okay, yeah, as you say, on that one, I I just, I think five percent might be, it might have been a little bit more historically accurate before, but as our population gets bigger, our, the the number of increase tends to be linear. So as our population grows, I'm seeing that number decline. So we're 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 increasing on average at about two thousand people a month or about twenty five thousand people a year, which when we had, which when we had five hundred thousand people, that was a, you know, a significantly higher increase than it is when we have seven hundred and fifty thousand. And so I worry about keeping that number like a linear five percent increase when I think it's actually closer to three to three and a half percent. And I think that is also slowing, uh particularly as housing becomes more of an issue, as our housing gets more expensive and as we have a a larger housing gap. I don't foresee us continuing to grow at five percent. I think it's going to be closer to three percent. So that does concern me if our five year projection is showing five percent instead of closer to three or to three and a half percent. Um, I just would like to be conservative on these numbers because I don't want to assume that we're going to be getting revenue that we're not going to get. Uh, the only other assumption that I saw just from that previous slide before you move on is completely eliminating one time costs. Now, I understand that you don't want to like look at one time costs over time because they're one time costs, but we always have one time costs. So projecting our budget based on no one time cost, uh, once again, is is really um kind of risky to me. I would rather say over the last you know, ten years, what has the average one time cost been? Because we're always going to have one time costs. They're just going to be different. And so I would rather look at like an average of saying, hey, over the last ten years, we've had an average of seven million or ten million or twelve million. I have no idea what the number is. But looking at what an estimate of one time costs would be would actually be, I think, a better way than just eliminating one time cost because I think there's probably a zero percent chance that we're ever going to have a budget year that we have no one time cost.
That's that's correct.
Those are, those are very valid points. I appreciate that. That, this is what we, we wanted to get this out here for everybody and then we can take this, we know that we're going to have to refine this. And so these are great points. And I'll go, I'll take these back and I'll be looking at these and um and we'll we'll work on factoring them in.
Um, now we did just for clarity's sake, we did take all the input received at the offsite from all the departments and we put those requests into the budget and Rudy will will mention that we've done that. So that covers some of those one time costs that we eliminated. But you're right, we should have a buffer in there for other unexpected because there always is.
Yeah, the problem is up until this twenty four budget year, we didn't specifically identify one time costs. And so that that's a factor. So we'll, I'll go back and I'll I'll dig into the information and see what we can get for that, Commissioner. And and we'll, we'll come up with a number and figure out where we are. Yeah, because it's a very valid point. We will always have one time costs. They're never going to go away. And the same thing with capital, the seven, seventy four ten, we took them out. But we can look at what our averages have been over the last several years and we can factor in the number for that as well. And now, now some of that is going to be picked up in some other areas. But yeah, I I appreciate that. Um, as I said at the very beginning, this is our first crack at it and we know we're going to have to refine it. And we know we want to refine it because we want to make this as good as possible and make it match what we really truly believe it's going to be. So, thank you.
No, and I appreciate that. I mean, this work is, this, the work you're doing is absolutely necessary for us to have a a more holistic and a better understanding of where we're headed as a county. I just want to make sure that we're not being too conservative because otherwise we won't have contingencies in place to deal when we have a potential issue. So thank, you can continue. Thank you for uh.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for that, Commissioner. Um, we're trying to project this out. Two, for too many years, commit, the county's looked at one year at a time. And then when we look in at, oh, we can't raise taxes because we can do things at the same cost that we had in the past, but we can't. Unfortunately, costs have been going up for a lot of reasons. So we're going to be relooking at this. I have not built into this model yet the the changes in demographics that we know are going to impact some of our departments. Um, the the sheriff's department has put some of those into their numbers, but I'm going to be spending a little bit of time working on that to improve these numbers as well. Okay? So we put together a spreadsheet here and I I sent it out to the commissioners so you can look at it. Um, but we went through and we looked at the numbers of the revenues and kind of looked at where the historic, historical numbers are, where we think they're going to be growing. And we've assigned some factors in here. We set this up so that we can change those factors really easily and run them through. So like your five percent on property tax, we can run that through very easily and we can get a number. And that's what we've been doing, trying to automate this as much as possible so that we can make changes on the fly as we see that they're needed. We took the expenses and we generally split those up into a couple of different categories. We looked at salaries and benefits and 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 took the the projections for salary growth from our H R department as well as the the benefits. And then we split things up into into material supplies and services, um, internal service funds, um, and capital, basically. I'm sorry, I've been battling up up a respiratory thing here, so I apologize. Um, but so we took this up and we've, we looked at historical averages and then we kind of took it and and said, what do we think the best guess is? Now, all of this stuff is open to commissioners and 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 Ezra and others that, you know, department heads that may think, well, this isn't quite right. Let's look at this and adjust it. We want to make this as good as possible. So it's, this is not a a completed project that's going to be done forever and ever and ever. We're going to be adjusting this because we want to make it the best that we can. One thing that we did do in here, we know that every single year we have, we don't, we don't spend all of our salary money, salary and benefits. We always have a variance in there. So we added back into this projection the estimated variance based upon the last, you know, at several years. Say if it was a three percent variance, well, we took the projected salaries and benefits and then we multiplied by three percent to come up and we added that back in. So so we're, we're trying to not, you know, uh, somewhere similar to what, you know, Amelia was saying, on the other flip side of it, we're adding this back because it's probably something we know that every year we have some variances there, but we'll get the other things in. Then we came and I went and started looking at specific adjustments that we need to make. And when I'm talking about specific adjustments, I have a tab in here that we started out with this looking at what are the items that are in our capital improvement program, what aren't in there, what is funded, what isn't funded? And looking at these various things and adding these in, some of these things will impact us. Like just yesterday, I found out about one item here on line ten that we're going to have to do some security um system upgrades at the at the jail in the security center, which is going to cost us probably seven million dollars in twenty five and twenty six. I I factored that in here. Those are some of these one time things. I also looked into C I P for the out years. So we fund years one through three. Anything that's beyond year three has not been funded. And so I've taken the C I P numbers and put them in here and I've laid layered these in. But what I also did is I looked at the cost, the estimated cost of these things and then we started showing a recapitalization, which we have never, when we bought, when we built this building, the admin building, we paid thirty million dollars or whatever the heck it is for it. We never saved one mi- one penny to replace it. So we're in the process right now of working to get it so that we are putting money aside for the replacement of all of our facilities so that we'll take the average life of the bill, billing, say. for the replacement of all of our facilities, so that we'll take the average life of the bill billing, say, let's say it's thirty thirty years, and we'll divide the cost of of building that, that constructing that building, divide it by thirty years, and then we build in an inflation factor of like ten or twenty percent so that we can start putting that much aside every single year. I have factored that money into the five-year forecast. So, if you look at this, all of this yellow stuff, that's the stuff that I put in with the recapitalization in here, assuming that these projects go forward, um we are going to have have all of that, that recapitalization, well, the one-year cost initially, and then we'll have the rest of it divided up over several years. So, this, this stuff right here is coming right off of the C I P that you guys approved the adjust, the amendment to just a a month or two ago. Now, then I also looked at this and said, well, we have some items in C I P right now, but we have to do some recap for them as well. So, all of the items that are currently in the C I P, we've added a recap amount in here for them in addition to what we did above. And then we got a few other things that come in that we know, we're, we got stuff that's going to come in, like we know we're going to have to put some money aside for the the capital murder defense stuff, I I don't know the amounts exactly, these amounts will likely change because I think these are the old amounts we were looking at previously. But I'm trying to recapture all of the one-time costs that are in here. We know there's some some costs that are going to be going ongoing for our parks in the county that are in the C I P program. We got road stuff, and so then we have these, but then we layered in, and a couple of months ago, we had a budget kickoff meeting down in Saint George with all the departments. I went through all of the presentations that were provided by the different department heads, and I've taken those requests that they think they're going to need, and I put those in here in this one-time, one specific request category, and I factored them in by years as much as possible. Now, once again, you look at these things, and so some of these things, like you may have three attorneys we're adding for four hundred and seventy-six thousand, not all of that is ongoing because that includes like the cost of a vehicle, cost of computers, cost of all that stuff. So, I've tried to break out the portion that's going to be ongoing salaries and other things going forward. Um, we look at this, what the, you know, auditor's needing, I just found out that the E R P number is probably not sufficient, we're probably going to have to bump that one up. But, so I've gone through and done, look at all of these things, we have quite a few of them for the sheriff's department. Now, we only have a five-year forecast, but the sheriff's department gave us stuff for the next ten years. And I layered those in too because I think while the numbers will likely change, we want to have them on our radar and say, this is what we think is probably going to be happening. Um, but it's not in the five-year, only the first five years are in there. So, we took all of these things and we added them all together by department, and then we plugged those in to each fund based upon what's on that that list there. Now, I also wanted to be fair too because looking at, you know, we'll probably have sixty million dollars of capital expense in in twenty twenty-seven to build a public works building. But we know that we're going to bond for that because there's no way we can cover that, so I estimated about what the bond amount would be coming in for that, so I've offset it with the potential revenue from the bond issuance, because we don't want to, you know, we don't want to, you know, be be um disingenuous with this, I I think we need to figure out what's really on. And then I also looked, added one thing to the general fund, which is transfer to other funds. And we know that if the, if the health department is short, we will have to fund that or cut the health department budget one way or another, but this looks at the health department, um, the C J C, which is one of, which is a high priority pro- um program for the, that the county commissioner told us we have to fund, and then six ninety is our risk management fund, if there's some things that are a little off in there, we'll, we'll want to be either funding those or we'll be cutting those back. So, that's what this transfer to other funds number represents. It only shows up in years where we're showing deficits. If we go through this schedule here, we, we put a lot of time into Fund One Hundred, Fund Two Thirty, which is the health department. Um, we looked a lot at two ninety, and as we were looking over this last two days, we realized that there's some things that need to be changed in here. So, some of the assumptions, some of the formulas and things in two ninety, we're going to be changing, but what we've done with two ninety, we're splitting out the recorder's office from the other functions in two ninety because recorder's office is the one, one um department that has a a dedicated funding source. So, we, we were splitting that out, but these numbers are going to be revised, and we'll have something to you within the next week. I also realized that we need to make some adjustments to our internal service funds generally. And a lot of this is because they have to use, you know, I, some of the formulas aren't, don't appear to be right. I know that they're not, and so we're going to have to fix that, and some of that might be because we know that in the, in the internal service funds, they collect money from their customers and put it into a fund, and then you use fund balance to buy the vehicles and stuff like that, I don't think that's being reflected in here. So, we're, we're adjusting this, I will be cleaning up all of these factors over the next couple of days. Within the week, we anticipate having a revised version of this for you. But the numbers that we're showing in the general fund we believe are reasonable, except for what Commissioner Gardner has pointed out to us, and we'll revisit those. Um, looking at the rate, the growth rate for property taxes and also adding in a um, a a portion of the one-time costs that we have historically had, so. You know, with these numbers, we're looking at a, a, we're projecting a fourteen point nine million dollar deficit next year in twenty-five. And that's going up to about eighteen million in twenty-six, and by reducing the the property tax number, that's going to raise that even a little bit higher. So, and if we add in, in some of the one-time costs, it will have a similar effect. So, I hope to get those, some of that stuff revised for you in the coming week. We wanted to get these numbers to you so that you have an idea of what we're looking at, because I know that we're going to be looking at what our financial needs are over the next couple of meetings and making some decisions based upon those.
Any other questions, Commissioner Gardner?
Yeah, have you um, have you figured in the costs that are currently being covered by ARPA that will drop off at the end of this year and also at the end of twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, we, we have included those, and some of that, that's, we, we have included those and and um, I am going to be doing a little bit of double checking and make sure that if they're being currently paid out of Fund Two Forty-eight instead of out of their, their home fund, that I get those transferred over, that's just something that I didn't, I, I was thinking about that last night, and I thought, I got to check on that, so I'll get that done and check on that in the next couple of days.
So, let's make sure we check on that because I know for sure we have like the Victims Witness uh coordinators, we've got the Voca grant gap for Children's Justice Center. We've got um some spec- some special victims unit stuff out of the sheriff's office,
Yep.
all of which are currently funded out of two forty-eight that I think are going to be funded at, at a Fund One Hundred, and I think that would increase that to another maybe million, million and a half a year at least.
Yeah.
Um.
We have time limited in two seventy, or six seventy also.
And then also, have you taken into account the increases um in the addition of the new courts? I know we're, we've been discussing adding both prosecutors and public defenders to cover the new courts that are opening as well as court security from the Sheriff's Department, all three of those are general funds. So, those are just the new courts that are opening third quarter of this year, and I'm wondering if you've accounted for those, um, but then annualize that for the twenty twenty-five numbers and beyond, and that's another big thing that that I would look at.
Yeah, that one is in here, but Public Defenders has not been adjusted for that because I'm not, I'm not sure what we're, where we're going with that contract, so I want to make sure we get some, you know,
Right.
good numbers for that.
Well, regardless of where the specifics go on the contract, there will be an increase.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like whether, what the, what the increase is, we don't know, but there will be, so we need to, we need to account for that um as well, as well as court security. Um, so those are my questions on that, and then, like I said, annualizing that based off of the twenty twenty-four budget. Those are probably the two quick ones I have at the top, and then the third question I had was if we're looking at fund balances, um, I would love to see how this, how these deficits go in line with our fund balance and when we run out of fund balance. And also, uh, I guess a fourth, a fourth question would be not only when we do, we run out of money in fund balance, but prior to that, we're going to get to the point that we run out of cash flow. Right, and um also, uh, when we run out of cash flow and we're going to have to, when would we have to start bonding against future revenues to make up for uh the fact that our revenue gets low enough that we no longer have cash flow around October, November before we start collecting property tax increase?
Yeah. Okay, I will add those in, I'll modify the schedule to put fund balance in there so we can see what the impact of these, these adjustments are on there, so that, we'll put that in there. Um, that's a great, great point, we need to keep on top, on top of that for sure.
Yeah, so this, I mean, this is a really, this is a really good start, but just the things, just like I said, that I, that I see off the top of my head.
Yep.
What I talked about earlier, A, um, you know, what are, what are, what one-time costs do we have? B, I think we have not, I think we've overestimated the increase for property tax. You know, C, let's look at those ARPA funds and things that are currently being paid for out of Fund Two Forty-eight. D, let's uh account current fund balance and projections with fund balance. And then like E, let's make sure that we're looking at our cash flow revenue because um, a lot of people look at fund balance and they think of that as just a savings account, but that's also the cash revenue that we pay bills with until we collect in our cyclical environment, so I want to make sure that we're taking into account those five things as we look at a five-year projection moving forward.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate your, your, your thoughts and your eyes on this because one person can't capture everything, and so I need to, I need people to say, oh, wait, you forgot this, or maybe, did we look at this or whatever? So, yeah, as, so I appreciate, you know, any of the, the department heads that may look at this, any of the commissioners, Ezra, you know, our finance team, as we look at this, let's, let's, because we want to make this realistic. So, yeah, thank you.
One of the things I'd highlight is, is we got in to the room together with department heads, uh, just how outside of the box everyone seems to be thinking lately. Um, we're sharing space in Saratoga Springs, for example, as they, as they expand their city hall. You know, we're able to take some of that space and and offer health department services that uh then a mother doesn't have to drive from Saratoga Springs to downtown Provo, and those types of things that Public Works is working on with their long-range plan, like you say, gives us the ability to know what we're bonding for, but maybe you could give us an idea of uh timeframe for the rest of this year, I mean, if we know that we spent into the deficit last year, took money out of the bank to balance the budget, um, doing that again this year is probably, you know, a bad idea, but do you or Rod want to walk us through kind of timeframe as far as a truth and taxation conversation?
If you're asking for, you know, what are my thoughts on that, I think we have to do something this year, or it's just too, the hole's getting too deep in terms of a negative. Um, and we're, we're looking at between fifteen and twenty uh because of there's variability, like on the revenue side with sales tax and on the revenue side where we projected property tax, you know, there's, there's some squishiness there. But we would like, we would recommend that we do a truth and taxation this year. Um, and and be looking at between fifteen and twenty. Um, and and our initial, when you make an initial assessment about what you would do for twenty twenty-five taxes, this is in twenty twenty-four, I would go with the high side of that because we have a couple of gates that we can drop it down, but we can't raise it for twenty twenty-five from whatever we decide initially, so I would go with the more conservative. Um, twenty would be a a good number there, and then for two ninety, which is the other taxing entity we have, um, I think uh between half a million and a million would would get us set right, and we're, we're only looking at a two-year horizon um because we want to, our recommendation would be to, to do tax increases every couple of years so that they're smaller, and if you guess wrong one way or the other, you can either you, you have fund balance to help, but you can two years later adjust that either by raising taxes again or by not raising taxes if you've, if you guessed conservative and we end up with more money than we thought, which is a good thing, then you just don't do a tax increase one, two-year cycle, but having a five-year forecast helps that and making sure that it, it adjusts over time like Rudy's working on, that we can regularly adjust, that gives us a pretty good picture. So, if you're looking at a recommendation, I'd say twenty million for um an initial guesstimate for this year and um uh somewhere between half a million and a million on the two ninety. That's as of right now, now, if I, I'll go through and look at the stuff that Commissioner Gardner's given us and, you know, the thoughts and all, work some of that stuff through, and we'll see where we land, but I'll have something for with, for you within the week that we can have an updated estimate. But we've got, if we, if we do nothing, we just have a couple of years, and Yeah, we're in trouble. we're in trouble. I mean, not just because we're taking more money out of fund balance, there won't be any money to take.
And as you highlighted earlier, I mean, the tax, you know, decrease in twenty twenty-one, you know, essentially that was the deficit that we had last year, right?
Yeah, correct.
You know, one could argue government never does that, but Utah County did that, they gave you your money back, but unfortunately, you know, um.
And it was, it was okay, right?
Yeah.
We just need to increase now, we didn't take it for a few years when we really turned out we didn't need it, but now we need it, and so the responsible thing to do is to adjust frequently. Because about half, about a third of our revenue comes from property tax, which does not index for inflation, right?
Right.
And sales tax is very variable, like we saw, we have a six million dollar spread this year, which is
I appreciate that timeline, I appreciate that update, uh, yeah, truth and taxation is the tool that we've been given, and and it helps us keep in check and balance, like you say.
And so I'm glad we're doing this early in the year so people can, and being transparent on where we're at and where we need to go, so I, I think uh when people, reasonable people see good information, they come to similar conclusions.
Yeah, you, you bring that up, it's funny because you and I have talked in-depth about how our budget doesn't line up with many of the cities, and so people kind of get programmed that maybe different service districts or cities are having truth and taxation over the summer when we're approving our budget around Thanksgiving, Christmas time, and so being able to sort of forecast that and be able to do it similar to our cities, I think is beneficial.
It is beneficial, because then you get the whole picture all at once, you know, feel like you're getting nickel and dimed every month or every six months.
Yeah.
Um, so I appreciate the commission's willingness to do this early.
No, we appreciate the, yeah, your office, the auditor's office has worked tirelessly to get us all in the room, like we talked earlier, that, I think that was a big benefit to many, to be able to see, oh, you know, the, the needs of others, the, the other departments, right? And and where we, where we need to reach across the the aisle, one of the, that's why I bring up working with other cities and things, I think my taxes that I pay in my city, you know, should help work together for my school districts and like the more that we can work together, uh, you know, I think we get more bandwidth, so, well, well done.
Thank you.
Hey. Anything else?
No, I just want to reiterate once, you know, we are planning to continue this, so we're getting, we know we have to look out into the future, so every single year, multiple times during the year, we'll adjust it. And we'll continue to have a rolling five-year forecast so that we don't get ourselves caught off guard, we'll continue to to forecast as best we can for that coming year, so we know ahead of time that gives us a lot of flexibility and a lot of, you know, if we know we're going to be short, we can take steps now to kind of fix that, so, yeah.
Thank you, thanks Rudy, thanks Rod. Okay, moving on to work session number three, our quarterly report from the Public Defenders Association, I see Josh here, and then I see Ben online.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can't see you though, looks like you're camouflaged a little, so.
I'm, I'm at.
Did you see that, Josh? Ben laughed.
I like that, that was great.
I got Ben to laugh. Very good. Hey.
Um, so, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to uh report back to the county on, on twenty twenty-four quarter one. Um, and uh, we'll start with the presentation. Uh, we, we did get a bunch of feedback from Ezra on formatting and and additional content that was that, so you'll see a little bit of a difference in the, in the structure of the, of this uh presentation. Um, but if there's additional changes or or alignment to a different uh framework that you, you'd like, I mean, we, we appreciate the feedback and are happy to adjust. Um, so, uh, Utah County Public Defender Association, core values, justice, zealous advocacy and integrity. Uh, some highlights from our mission, ensuring justice and equity uh for all individuals facing criminal charges. Um, zealous legal representation, safeguarding their constitutional rights and advocating for fair treatment and reflecting the highest standards of justice and humanity. Uh, Josh is going to talk about some strengths and weaknesses that Uh, Josh is going to talk about some strengths and weaknesses that uh from, from our perspective uh that we bring to the table to the county.
Yeah, so some of the things that are listed here and, and we haven't gone through and, and uh, you know, counted up the number of jury trial wins or dismissals, there have been many. Uh, but some of the overall organizational successes, um retention. So despite uh some of the, the issues that we've had with that, uh, that relate to high caseloads and uh to uh salary uh issues. Uh, we have, you know, pretty much weathered some of those storms. We still continue to lose uh attorneys, but some of our um, our new hires uh have uh been able to be retained. Um, we've been able to have a uh, you know, a community at the office. The people that have left have always expressed that they really love the office. They, they love the work. So it's not that, that is the reason that they are leaving. Um, it's always been something related to compensation and or workloads. Um, as far as dedicated legal service or expertise, um, we've been implementing and we've done this for some time and continue to do so, but we have um attorneys who do trainings bi-weekly. We have other attorneys who are uh day supervising attorneys. So those are attorneys who um handle a particular calendar day and they are a liaison with the court. Uh, they have a team that they meet with, discuss any issues that they might have with cases. Um, and, and because we are an office as we are, that, that leads to um you know, group think and group knowledge. Uh, so if somebody has a, a particularly difficult issue, they can reach out and there's somebody else that can help out with that. Uh, community trust, really, we've tried to be um as open as possible uh going through audits. Um, trying to answer questions that the, that the county has had um with our office, uh, and we intend to continue to do so. I think you can go next slide, Ben. And so some of the issues and challenges that we have, uh, that we are currently still facing, and this has been kind of an ongoing theme, I think, for the last couple of years. Uh, where last year, even uh according to the court's uh numbers, uh, there was, you know, a hundred percent increase in, in the filings, so case filings uh over the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three uh years. Um, so there's a, a huge increase in workload. Um, we've already addressed and, and discussed uh the effects that that has on the attorneys um and our ability to handle uh that number of cases. Uh, those, those issues, you know, do lead to high stress. Um, as I indicated, some of the people who have left, uh, it's been because of, you know, burnout uh due to high caseloads, uh, or they can get paid more uh or received offers at uh other um law firms. Um, some of the issues were funding for defense resources. The caseload did increase significantly. Um, you know, so did the need to have investigator costs and uh expert costs. Um, you know, one of the ways that we try to handle those defense resources is that um, you know, there's a system in place where an attorney evaluates the case um and decides what type of investigation needs to happen. Um, if there's particular experts that need to be retained uh for particular issues. Um, there's a uh resource request form that's filled out and provided to uh administration. Uh, that is reviewed. Uh, that, that request also indicates the type of case, has information about the, the kind of case, what the reason for the uh request is, uh, what the goal of that would be. Uh, that's reviewed and if there are other additional questions, there's a meeting uh that, that takes place to discuss that, um, to look at potential alternatives. Uh, i- if those are available. And then ultimately they're either approved or uh denied by uh the executive director. Uh, but our, our defense resources, um, and you'll see when we get to our case numbers that the cases um have pretty much maintained um uh their numbers, their counts from last year around the same time to this year. Um, and so we, we've, we've utilized already, you know, the, the budget for defense resources, and I know Ben will talk a little bit more about that. Um, parity, we, we fought hard and we were grateful for the increase uh that was given last year. Um, there was a, a subsequent increase to uh county, county attorney's offices as part of twenty-four, twenty twenty-four um that we were not a part of. Um, and uh, obviously we've discussed this as well, that fu- funding public defense is a, is a constitutional mandate uh that the state has graciously passed on to the counties. Um, and uh since twenty, I believe sixteen or seventeen, the IDC has been kind of the, the um committee or commission that is to kind of bridge any of those gaps. And, and we do receive quite a bit of funding from the IDC uh for our uh, our needs. Next slide, Ben.
So on this slide, I just wanted to kind of touch on some actions we've done because we, we acknowledge that the county is, is in a um operating at a deficit and, and we want to lower our asks by as much as we can. Really, as, as we're bringing us to the county, we, we vet them and make sure that they're only asking for the minimum that we absolutely need. Uh, some things we've done is utilizing, or is grant writing with the IDC. Uh, using some of their non-lapsing funding to uh fund uh major tech purchases, which reduces our operating costs. Uh, utilizing social workers, which in addition to be a, a cost savings within the office is also a, a cost savings for the county. Uh, because of the services we're able to do and the reduced jail time for uh our clients. Um, you know, we've, we've been able to find efficiencies in the office and, and Josh will kind of touch on this about consolidating um, um, schedules of, of court appearances uh as well as utilizing file lines so that we can have our attorneys be as efficient as possible. Um, face staff requests, um, where uh you'll see there's, there's a significant deficiency in, in the professional standards or requirements of attorneys, but rather than asking for all of that at once, phasing that request in as, as we're presenting it to the county. Um, spending down the reserves before asking for additional funding, um, which, which, which we did last year. Um, and then seeking additional funding from the IDC, uh, again, in, in grant writing outside of Utah County, where can we help uh share those costs as, as they, as they come up? Uh, and then uh last year, we were able to bring our attorneys into parity, which is a huge step because it's significantly less expensive to maintain an attorney than to replace, retrain and all the energy and resources that it pulls to, to associated with turnover. Um, so the next uh part of this uh presentation, we wanted to talk about the three audits that the county has requested. First is an assurance audit that was done by the Utah County Auditor. Um, there were three purposes to the assurance audit. They wanted to test compliance with the agreement. Uh, but basically our, our contract, section two, subsection A. Uh, there were no findings related to that. They wanted to test that we manage the signed counsel. Uh, they did have two findings, which the, the contract doesn't require that our uh contracts with conflict councils be in writing, but we agree that it is a best practice. So we've, we've committed all of those to writing. Um, and uh, and, and the, the draft for those, uh, I reviewed them this week and they'll be going out and will be implemented by quarter three, uh, as, as was reported in the uh, in the audit um findings. And then the uh avoiding flat fee uh structure, the auditors were not able to tell if we had flat fee contracts or not. Uh, and, and the answer was we don't. And if you look in the expenses, you'll see that the the variation in our expenses by contractor shows uh that uh as expense or as, as defense work required additional time, effort and resources, uh, we were able to adjust the, the contracts accordingly. Uh, the key takeaway from the assurance audit for the commission is that the sixty percent increase in workload reported last year was accurate, which drives the need for additional, additional defense resources and additional attorneys. Um, as part of their, the second audit, um, the consulting audit from the Utah County uh Auditor's Office, uh, there were four purposes to that. I've got two on this slide and two on the following slide. Uh, they, they really dug into substantiating uh our caseloads. Uh, the, the numbers that we're reporting to every quarter are, are those correct and, and matching up to um, to, to, to the cases that are actually happening. So the four parts, um, four areas of emphasis in the consulting agreement from the Utah County uh Auditor's Office were uh attorney compensation and expenses, which uh, this was looking at twenty twenty-three, uh, after the commission brought us into parity. Uh, the finding was that we, we were in parity. Uh, one, one important note, and I put it as a key takeaway, is that as in twenty twenty-three, we were in parity. Uh, as, as all of the county attorneys moved up one step or one lane in the pay scale, uh, the public defender attorneys did not move up a step in the pay scale. Uh, so we have a funding request uh for that um in order to maintain that parity as we move forward. Uh, second, there was an analysis on attorney hours worked in caseloads. Um, and we noted that there was a, a sixteen percent higher median hours uh than the county attorney. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're requiring forty-nine hours per week. I mean, that's just aside from the uh professional standards uh established by the American Bar Association. Just if we look at the amount of hours our attorneys are working beyond uh, you know, the forty hours that they're compensated for um for, for the work that they're doing, uh, we, they're, you know, obviously they're passionate about it and, and, and take uh their role as defenders very seriously, uh, but um we, we just need additional attorneys in order to, you know, prevent the burnout that's going to cost more in, in hiring new attorneys and um, to be able to um right-size the workload. Uh, the second, or the third and fourth purposes of the consulting um engaged audit was uh to look at our external non-employee expenses and to review our accounting system and structure. Um, again, uh, they, they noted that those expenses appeared appropriate, uh, that there were no issues or concerns with our accounting reporting. Uh, the um, you, you'll know from our last quarter's presentation that defense resources were significantly higher than budgeted. Uh, and, and this audit reviewing our accounting system and substantiating that uh, we were appropriately reporting our finances, uh, further substantiates that the additional funds requested to meet the increased caseload are, are needed. Um, before I go on to the I Bailey, are there any questions on the, the two county attorney audits, the assurance audit or the consulting audit?
Commissioner Gardner, do you have any questions? Up to this point?
No, um, I just, I, I have one question real quick. Do you pay your attorneys hourly or do you pay them salary?
Our attorneys are paid salary.
Okay, so in salary, so you're not compensating them for forty hours a week, you're compensating them for doing a job, which is what all of us on salary do. And I can't remember the last time I only worked forty-nine hours a week. So I just thought I'd make that point that the vast majority of the attorneys, you might charge clients, attorneys might charge, charge clients by the hour. But if we're paying salary to equate that to only forty-nine hours a week, like I said, I can't remember the last time I only worked forty-nine hours a week. In fact, right now I'm on vacation calling into this meeting because even on vacation, I work about forty hours a week. So um, making that point over and over again is not actually helping your cause.
I, I
But you absolutely continue.
Yeah, I, I acknowledge that point, but if we look at maintaining parity and compensation between the hours and compensation received by um county attorneys and the hours and compensation received by public defenders. The county attorney, if, if you look at the consulting engagement, uh, show that they are working forty hours and our attorneys are working significantly more time.
Yeah, we have to report forty hours, but I don't know a single county attorney that actually only works forty hours. That's just the, the way our reporting system works. But um, I think it's important to recognize that these are high level salaried positions and every one of us that works salary recognizes that, that I mean, we don't just work forty hours a week.
I also think what Commissioner Gardner is saying is that we, we feel your pain. We know, we know about burnout and we know about a little extra workload. We're down thirty-three percent in the commission office currently, working with, um, you know, through some things. So we really appreciated you working with Ezra. He's helped, he's helped carry some of the load as we know your portfolio commissioners, you know, going through some medical issues. So um, this feels different than other times we've presented, but I'm thinking you're getting towards more number reporting? Is that accurate? Okay, I just want to make sure we weren't going to miss some of that, so.
No, yeah, that's
Okay.
No. We, we will move on. The I Bailey audit was uh four things, a review of our, our accounting system, a review of our clients and revenue analysis and analysis of our payroll and uh expenditure review. Uh, key takeaway from, from the I Bailey report was that our funds are appropriately spent and, and substantiates that they're being uh reported correctly. So if there are no questions on that, I'm going to turn it back over to Josh to talk through the numbers for the cases of, for twenty twenty.
What you've been waiting for.
I'm excited.
Uh, so you've seen this before. This is a previous uh data that we've shown uh last year, just to highlight um comparison of cases and hours. Um, obviously we speak hours, that's because of the ABA guidelines that we've discussed as well. Um, we can move on to the next one, Ben. Uh, so juvenile cases, um, you know, those are divided into delinquency and child welfare cases. So you can see there, um, how many new were added, how many were closed, and those that are pending, as well as the average caseloads uh by attorneys. Um, the juvenile uh division does, is heavy on conflict contracts. Um, uh mostly also dealing with like the child welfare s- side of things because it's uh, you're representing parents and and there is some crossover between that and uh district court. Can move to the next slide. So in district court and I, and we're keeping the formatting that uh was from the um ABA caseloads, but if you uh look at this, this is from the first quarter. Um, and this breaks down into, there were six hundred and sixteen felony cases that we were assigned to, and there were sixty-three of those that were um conflicted out. There were two hundred and ninety-four misdemeanors and twenty of those were conflicted out. And then if you see that there were four hundred and twelve orders to show cause that we opened as well. Um, that uh i- is fairly close to, I believe, the numbers that we reported last year. Um, around the same time, um, it's within a ten percent uh difference. Uh, that's also, uh, we were provided with numbers from the courts themselves. Uh, albeit for a different period of time, a longer period of time, which was, and I got this uh last night. So um, January first to April thirtieth of last year, um, there were uh, compared to that same time period this year, there were fourteen hundred and eighty-nine cases this year and sixteen forty-seven last year for a difference of one fifty-eight. So that's the ten percent difference there. Uh, so they are still trending higher than uh if we go back and look at, you know, twenty twenty-two, even twenty twenty-one, um, they continue to stay high.
Sorry, Josh, these numbers were through March.
This was through March. This is January one through March thirty-first. And then um, I did just, it's not included in the slides, but I did the same thing for um the, the second quarter um through five P M. last night. And um for that period of time, we uh had a total of seven hundred and thirty-six cases. Uh, there are four hundred and eighty-seven or four hundred and ninety-seven, sorry, felonies. Thirty-five of those have been con- uh conflicted, two hundred and thirty-nine misdemeanors with twenty of those being conflict cases and two hundred and eighty-seven orders to show cause uh so far for, for that period of time. So we are still trending high. Um, and uh, you know, we had anticipated that that was, you know, um last year was, it was said that the higher caseloads were a result of backlog. So we were hoping that that was going to be uh, you know, lead to lower numbers at this point in time. And, and while it is lower, it's still higher than, than it was before. So um, if, you know, the difference between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, according to the courts, was over a hundred So if, you know, the difference between 2022 and 2023, according to the courts, was over 100% increase, a 10% increase between that 100% to this year, still, it's a 90% increase over two years ago, if that makes sense. So, yeah, they're still, they're still up there. And that's what's leading to, you know, increased resources being used and a need for that. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Commissioner Gardner?
No, I just think it's important, like, we do recognize, we do recognize that. In fact, one of, one of the things that we're dealing with is that we only prosecute about 20% of the cases that come to us. 80% of the cases never even get prosecuted because we don't have enough prosecutors to even prosecute them. Right? And so the request that you're giving us for more attorneys, we're getting the same request from the prosecutor's office. We also have a public that wants prosecutions and justice because they don't want us to go the way of some of the, you know, the liberal cities that you've seen in like New York and San Francisco. And our public has a real concern that happens. We also recognize that our biggest issue is growth and as growth occurs, that crime doesn't occur at a linear, at a linear rate with growth. As we become more urban and we grow, crime will happen at an exponential rate. On top of all of that, I'm a firm believer in a restorative justice and that we need criminal justice reform and that you need more social workers and that we need more alternative paths because I think that's not only a more effective way to handle this, but I also think it's a moral way to do it. It just literally comes down to money. I would love to give you the money to give you all of the public defenders. I definitely recognize that under the Article 6 of the U.S. Constitution, this is necessary in order to have a just society. It's just that we literally can't give you money we don't have. And so we're working through that process and we'd love, you know, to continue working with you as partners, ensuring that not only are we prosecuting crime and keeping our citizens safe, but that we're also doing it in a moral way that is not just prosecuting people with mental illnesses and that is helping them and that we can lean on rehabilitation instead of just punishment. So, I mean, as we look at these numbers, we see these issues. We see this with housing. We see this with enforcement. We see it with prosecution and obviously with defense. It's just, you know, we're just all in a tough spot.
I know we're not voting on anything today, but, you know, last year, me and Commissioner Gardner were at opposite ends of this issue. And on a day like today, if we were voting on something, you know, there wouldn't be perhaps a resolution made. And so for me, I would love to see something going forward that would maybe take somewhat of the politics out as people come and go in this chair and the commissioners change over the years. I know that, you know, Commissioner Sakovic has a different opinion on, you know, he's your portfolio, so he sees you more and probably is around you more. So I would love something more scaled to where triggers are in place that take the politics out of this. And then the presentation is more about the numbers versus, hey, here's, you know, the county audit things and why we need more, right? It's just like, feels like your time would be so much better spent doing something different than having to come beg us for money, which we, as Commissioner Gardner says, we would love to give you.
Sure.
But, you know, so I would love something going forward that we could come up with that maybe put triggers in place that said, you know, and again, you know, sometimes we might not agree on one officer per thousand in a city is how many police officers you should have, right? And your report says how many public defenders we should have and different things. Putting some, something together that we could all agree on that helps, you know, keep some parity, like what we were all talked about.
Sure, and just, if I could follow that up, I mean, one of those things. And for the record, I'm happy to take time to come here and do this because I
You have always been, yeah, very, very good at that.
And I think that, like, while I can handle one client at a time, this is a broader issue, right? And is more widely applicable and helps everybody out, you know, on a larger scale. You know, the, there's been reference to the budget kickoff. And, you know, it would be nice to somehow be included in those types of things, to forecast and be, you know, part of that discussion so that when the budget presentation is going on, it's, there's no need to remind, oh, and we need to do this because it's already been brought up.
Really good point.
And so happy to make ourselves available for those types of things, obviously, going forward. But not to delay anymore that. I appreciate that. Ben's got the
And that is difficult because typically, I'd say typically, your portfolio commissioner would do that, but your portfolio commissioner hasn't been at work in eight months and neither has his policy advisor. So it is difficult for us. I think in an ideal world, we would have, we would have three commissioners and three policy advisors instead of two commissioners and two policy advisors. And so it is very difficult for all of us. And so hopefully in the future, we can rectify that and make sure that your numbers are getting mentioned in those meetings. Absolutely.
Okay, Ben, go ahead.
So talking the budget for 2024, quarter one. Again, we look at our budget in three categories. Employee-related expenses, program expenses. Which program expenses would be defense resources? All of the court-related expenses that aren't payroll. And then general and overhead. You'll see that we're over budget in program resources, which again ties to the need for additional defense resources that were previously asked. And the general and administrative portion is only over budget in a timing perspective in that we pay our insurance at the beginning of the year for the full calendar year. So when we get into the details of that, you'll see that. On the next slide, we've got the employee-related expenses, salary, the parity, adjustment payroll, 401K, all the expenses to maintain the workforce that we have on budget with the numbers that were projected. And then defense resources. You'll see that we're significantly over budget based on the increased caseload in experts and conflict attorney hours required in process servers. All of those areas are areas that we're seeing significant increases based on the increased caseload, which really drove our ask for additional defense resources. And then finally, in general and administrative, the primary driver of the budget fluctuation is the insurance, which as you can see, that's for the full year with, well, the budget only reflects quarter one. So I don't anticipate an issue in the general administrative area of our budget. Finally, the budget asks from 2024, which Ezra told us that would be revisited after the audit reports were issued. So just to refresh everybody's, where we're at on those. The first is stuff increases in red to maintain parity with Utah County Attorney Compensation. The ones in blue are additional positions required based on the increased workload, based on the addition of additional courts, based on our social workers being tapped out beyond their capabilities. And then the requests in green are requests for additional defense resources based on 2023's, what we exceeded the budget by. And in 2023, we were able to absorb that cost and that run over within our reserves. But those have been fully exhausted in 2023. So we really need those additional resources. So in purple, it just summarizes those three areas, the costs associated with them. And since we're looking at quarter three and quarter four, we obviously wouldn't need to fund those positions for the full year, only for the second half of the year. So we obviously wouldn't need that funding. However, I mean, to Rudy's point during his presentation, you need to be able to project what that cost will be as a full cost for future years. So just in transparency, we're trying to show that impact.
And if I could just add a couple of things to a couple of these. We added social workers in attempting to maximize attorney time doing attorney things rather than, you know, trying to find treatment or other resources that would best be served by having a social worker at a reduced rate. We were able to hire the social workers and they've been a great help. They've actually had to, due to the number of cases and workload for them, they've had to scale back some of the things that they are able to do. And so that's why we're asking for that addition there. Just an explanation on the 10 district court attorneys. Years ago, we were appearing in front of four different judges on two different days. We saw that that was not super efficient as a lot of time is wasted waiting in court to handle cases. And so we consolidated to one court day, two judges, same caseload. But to be more efficient in handling that amount of work, adding an extra day to be able to go to the jail, to be able to do research. And so really what the 10 new district court attorneys would do would be allow us now, basically since COVID, most of the judges used to do a morning calendar or an afternoon calendar. There was occasional bleed over into the, you know, morning or afternoon. Now they're all going basically full-time, all day. And so a lot of our attorneys are having to try to be in two places at once. It also increases work for the county attorneys in that, you know, they have more public defenders that they have to contact. Same goes for us. We have more county attorneys that we have to try to talk to, to resolve those cases. So our goal would be to try to get, you know, three attorneys assigned to every court and just have one court so that they're not running around, they're only handling that one court calendar. They're able to work with the county attorneys that are assigned that calendar, reducing the number that they have to try to reach out and contact and the number of schedules that need to match up. Additionally, as you are aware and has been talked about today, American Fork Court, which has traditionally been a lower caseload that we've utilized to have administration still carry some cases, but also try to have time to do administrative things, is going to be moving to Provo and taking on a full caseload. And so we would be able to get to where we need to be with, you know, the plan of attorneys in one single court. Also with that, we would be able to have, as we do currently, a supervising attorney who is there to be, to help with coverage, help with more difficult, serious cases, who would be, you know, in each court on that given day so that they are able to observe and then see some of the issues that need to be addressed and help to address those. So that's how those attorneys would be utilized. And we think, you know, in addressing some of the initial needs, obviously, we've talked before about where the caseload puts us as far as like attorney needs. But trying to think on how to address that, knowing that that's not going to be something that we can accomplish, you know, right this moment or perhaps in the near future. But we can approximate to that and in doing so, also be a little bit more efficient in the time that we do have, so.
That concludes our brief.
Thank you, Ben. And Josh, I, yeah, again, certainly appreciate you always being willing to take my calls and texts and questions. Do you have any further questions, Commissioner Gardner?
Yeah, sorry, I had to keep my camera off my iPad dying and I don't want to drop the call. I just have a question on the ask. You obviously know that we don't have money for those asks. And so part of my issue is when I'm working with a department and that department recognizes that the industry standard is so far off of what we can actually afford. This is very common. We see this across the board. In government, they recommend that every supervisor have seven direct reports. In Utah County, the average is 20. We are three times the average when it comes to resources for a lot of our departments. The lucky departments have twice, you know, instead of three times the gap, they have twice the gap. So as I look at your ask, like, I understand that those are based on industry standards, but we just simply can't afford it. And so part of the issue is that I need to rely on the experts to try to tell me what a reasonable ask is. And when I look at your ask, I see something that I don't disagree with you that that's what you need. I don't disagree with the health department that they need more. I don't disagree with the auditor's office that they need more. We just can't afford it. I can't give you money I don't have. And so when I look at your ask, what I really need is I need a partner that can come to me with a reasonable ask, recognizing the constraints that we have. I mean, you just saw a presentation that estimated that next year, we're looking at a $15 million deficit, 14.9 million, that didn't take into account several things and overestimated our property tax. So as we're looking at the resource constraints, it's hard because all, I mean, I'm seeing that you say, well, we can't do this with what we have. Okay, well, I can't give you much more. So I would encourage you to try to look at this and say, how can we work together and look at a different glide path that works within the realm of possibility? Because as much as I would love the sky to be purple, it's not. As much as I would love to see unicorns going down the street, they aren't. And as much as I would love to give you everything you ask for, I can't. And so I would love to see something that's more in line with reality than national standards. I mean, even if you look at the county tax rate, Salt Lake County is like two and a half times ours as is Davis County. And it's like, we're getting compared to, we're getting compared to Salt Lake County and Weber County and Davis County, and we don't even have anything close to their tax rate. Now, with that said, obviously, you just saw the previous presentation. We're doing the work. We're willing to do, to do the hard things. We're going to, we're looking at a potential truth in taxation. But I also think it's important to note that the one commissioner that you have advocating for you is also the one commissioner who hasn't said we need a tax increase. And it's like, he can't give you money he doesn't have. And I stand corrected. I said he hasn't been there for eight months. It's been six and a, it's been six and a half months since he was at work regularly. And his, you know, but his policy advisor's been running for office for eight months. And so for her, it has been eight months, but it's been six and a half months. Or I guess I should say six months and 16 days since he was at work regularly. We just, we can't, we can't rely on that. So, I mean, in fact, the budget presentation that we talked about, the budget kickoff, where we looked at the needs of every department and we found that we are wholly inadequate for any of our departments, he wasn't even asked. So it's like, I want to see that a partner come to us with like, what can you get by with in the bare minimum while we're running a giant deficit until we can get to the place that we're more fiscally sound and fiscally financial? So like, I need a shoestring, what can you get by on? So that I can work with you to get us to the point where we're in a financially better place, that we can work together. So that would be my ask, just for the future. I appreciate these numbers. I understand what you're, you know, what you're dealing with. I truly believe in the cause that you're fighting for as an individual. But I need to know what can you get by with as we head into the next cycle?
Yep, and we've been doing that with Ezra. We've been getting together and going through these and saying, this is the impact of not funding it and how that's working. So yes, we will do that, continue to do that.
Yeah, the verbiage on that last slide at the bottom kind of shows a little bit of that, right? Like, if we do this, we do this. It's, I think that's exactly what Ben's saying that you're doing with Ezra. And that's, that's great, what.
Well, and I think that as any good partner, especially in this type of, you know, area, we have to let you know the reality, right? If we didn't tell you what it actually looks like, then you're not aware of how bad or how good it is. And so, you know, I think that we have, obviously, we've presented the industry standards and initially came off of that in, you know, in an attempt to do what you just said. And that's where the ask does come from. And we recognized in doing so where the county is. And certainly, you know, we've, we've tried to maintain that negotiation, that discussion. So, you know, I don't want to come up here and be like, oh, you know, everything's rosy and you not have the big picture of, here's what's going on. Because I think that you need to know that, so. Thank you.
No.
No, thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, now moving on, we have a public hearing. Ezra was going to kind of tee this up for us a little bit.
Oh, do you want to do the consent agenda before you do the public hearing?
Sure. We can't, one of the items is this public Sure. We can't, one of the items is this public hearing, right? And so we essentially just hold item, knowing that. Is that what you'd like me to do?
It's up to you.
Well, I know it's up to me.
I'm happy to introduce it now. We can do that, too.
Let's build the consent.
Okay.
Agenda. Through consent, is there anything that's showing on items one through 19, Commissioner Gardner, that you'd like to hold?
I had none. I'm good.
Okay. And then on the regular agenda, item number one is approve or deny the request for the assessor as we spoke two weeks ago in our meeting.
Yeah, we had a request to continue that item for one more week.
Oh, okay. Well, that's gonna take care of that.
And in fact, if we could just continue, we can get rid of the, there's no meeting in two weeks, so. Okay, we could, we could do that. Or why don't we just strike it and then we can add it back on if we need to?
Strike item one on the regular agenda. And then, were you saying something, another item, Ezra? I'm sorry.
I don't know, that was.
Okay, terrific. So on the regular agenda, items one through 10, well, excuse me, two through 10. Any others, Commissioner Gardner?
No, I didn't have any.
Okay, 11 through 19. I'd like to.
I had none. I got all my questions answered.
Okay, is there a name on item 15?
Is it on there?
Oh, okay, so it was inside. I didn't see it on this paper. Jordan Singleton? Must have been on an attachment that I didn't see, so thank you for that, Jordan. Okay, so I'm good with that. Let's see here. And then items 20 through 24.
I think we better hold 24 until after the public hearing.
Correct. Okay, so hold 24. Any others, Commissioner Gardner?
I had none.
Okay. And then as far as closed, we will strike 25, 26, and 27 and hold 28. Good there. Okay. All right, terrific.
Okay, we are going to strike regular agenda item number one. Regular agenda item number 15 with the name of Jordan Singleton. Regular agenda item number 24, we will be holding. As far as the closed meetings, we will strike 25, 26, and 27, and we will hold 28.
Thank you, Jolynn. Okay. And I failed to mention, I will suspend the rules in this meeting as Commissioner Sakovich is not here, so I can second motions or make motions.
If I'll make a motion to enter a public, well, as it will, are we ready for the public meeting?
I think, I think we're gonna have Ezra just kind of tee it up real quick for us and let us know what it is in public.
Okay.
So this item is for conduit bond. We, if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we had our first meeting kind of noticing this and then have the subsequent public hearing to allow the public to weigh in on this opportunity. This is for the Boys and Girls Club of Utah County. This is for a capital project that would involve creating a new facility that they would run programming out of. For those who are unfamiliar with the Boys and Girls Club of Utah County, they provide programming for kids and teens to help them have evidence-based approaches to effective support. So this is anything from after-school activities to educational opportunities to recreational programs, just to provide that supportive environment for those disadvantaged populations that are lacking in those experiences. And so the county, a few years ago, with our American Rescue Plan Act dollars, partnered with this organization to help partially fund this facility and help create that. And so what we're doing today is to serve as basically a conduit entity which will give this smaller organization access to public financing rates. So this will overall decrease the cost of the project, which, since we're funding a good portion of it, just made sense financially for us to step in and do that. Now, conduit bonds, they don't provide any additional burden to the county. For example, if they, for some reason, couldn't make a payment, the county is actually disallowed by state law to step in and make a payment for them. So it provides a lot of protections where we're not necessarily seeing the negative impact of any potential bond obligations. This is just an opportunity to help them get access to those public rates. I know Matt Dougdale from Stiefel is here. He can correct me if I got anything wrong, but he's given me the thumbs up, so I think I got all that correct. But this public, public hearing is an opportunity for the public to speak to that if they wish to.
Thank you so much for that.
Commissioner, if you mind, I might just ask if we have anybody here from Gilmore Bell? Okay, great. So Gilmore Bell serves as bond counsel for this bond. So we have our financial advisor and our bond attorney.
Should there be any questions? Okay, terrific. All right. I would entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
Move.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now in public hearing for this item. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion to go out of public hearing?
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now out of public hearing. Any further discussion for you? On item 24.
I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve the item 24.
Okay, and I will second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Now is the moment of our meeting where we accept public comment. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission in public comment, please tell us your name and we don't interact back and forth, but we listen to you and then hopefully can hear you that way and we'll give you a few minutes.
Okay. Rest assured, I'm not here to ask for money. The budget's, the budget's crunched, it sounds like, so. But I get that. I'm a taxpayer, so. So we just wanted to come, oh, sorry, Norm Avery.
Norm Avery, thank you.
And we're down at 9552 South and 6200 West, out in the county, near West Mountain. And so we're kind of dealing with an issue out there right now where it appears there's a private group coming in from Alabama to put in a shooting range. And that happens to be about 140, 150 homes, butted up right against the BLM. And so they're working with the BLM to put the shooting range in up there. But they're, they're not coordinating with anybody and we've talked to them and they said, well, the county supports it. So that's why we're here to talk to the county, because we haven't heard anything about it from the county. But they're proposing over 750 acres up there for the shooting range. And it sits right behind all of our houses up on the west side. And so if you put a shooting range right there where all those homes is, they're anticipating probably an additional 4,000 people a month visiting that shooting range. Now, if you, if you think about that, if people come in and shoot 100 shots, 4,000 of them, that's a ton of shooting in a month. And so we're not against a shooting range. We like that. We're shooters. And we like, we like our guns, but a lot of people do. But that location is not the right spot. It sits right up against the fence of some of the, of some of the people up there. And so we're terribly concerned that we're going to destroy that entire 700 acres up there for number one. And number two, and our big concern is, is the noise. We have animals up there. That's an issue with the, with the animals and just the peace that would be robbed from the entire neighborhood. And so the range spans two miles along that corridor right there where the BLM is. And so everybody's affected that's built homes up there all the way along that border. And so there's also traffic issues getting in and out of there. Safety issues, we're not exactly sure how they're gonna protect with that many shots going off up there, their rifle shooting. They anticipate 40, about 40 stations where rifles can be shot, 40 to 60. And that's a lot of shooting. And so anyway, those are some of our concerns that we would just ask the commission. If there's dealings that we don't know about, which we don't know about anything, we'd certainly like to know and work with the group. I think there's different locations that they could put that shooting range, which we would support, but not right in everybody's backyard out there. That's just, it's a bad spot, so.
Thank you, Norm.
Yeah.
My name is Byron Lacy. I'm Norm's neighbor. I hope I don't mess that up because you did a good job. I don't really have a lot to add to that other than I've been in this meeting. I hear all the problems we have, and I got good news for you guys. This is an opportunity that we can make a difference easily. We live in the county. We pay taxes in the county. We call the police. County comes. We are county residents. They talked, Sister Gardner talked about, no, Sister Gardner, I'm sorry. I knew her from a ward out there, but Commissioner Gardner, she talked about 4H. And, you know, I was in 4H and FFA when I was a kid. My kids are. We raise animals. I am a, I ride cutting horses. I raise cutting horses. I live out there. I moved out there. I invested my whole life to be out there in that area for a lifestyle, and we're doing it. And we're doing well. We're doing great. And now they're gonna kind of sneak this shooting range in behind us. And I am the biggest shooter anybody will ever see. I've been in more shooting ranges and gun ranges than anybody in this room, and I love them. The problem is I've never been to a shooting range that butts up against houses. I've never seen that. And I've been to large ones. And so they're talking about putting this right behind our fences when there's how many acres of BLM land available? It doesn't even make sense. Something's wrong. And I think if you guys could just look at it and go, why are they doing this to these Utah County residents? Your residents, they're doing this to us. For what reason? They can move the location down a mile and not, not touch houses. There's no reason. The city of Payson wants to get this for revenue. They can move it down, not on our property lines, get their revenue. Nobody cares. Nobody's complaining. And I just think this is an opportunity. If you guys would really just look into this, because you're not gonna fix the deficit. You're not gonna fix mental health. You know, all of us are just normal people. My family deals with mental health and I'd like to come back and talk sometime about mental health and just things we can do as a difference. There's a lot of hard things in this world going on, but you guys could look at this one little thing, not make one difference to anybody in this world, move it down, protect us. They get their shooting range. We have our peace and quality of life that we deserve, that we did everything right. They don't deserve it. And if you guys could just look at this, it could be fixed, it could be stopped, and you can make a real difference. And that's just my, I ask, I plead with you guys, just to look at it, look at it, and see if you can make a difference for us, and we appreciate your time.
Thanks, Byron. Did Sister Gardner ever swear from the pulpit?
I will not say that until I find out what she's been doing with this.
Okay, fair enough. Knowing her, you know, having served with her for a year and a half, my guess is that she did. But I'll let her, I'll let her defend herself later. Anyone else that would like?
Hey, that's farm country. That's farm country and over farm words. I only ever use words that are in the Bible.
As long as it was biblical. Anyone else that would like to address the commission? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll go into closed session. Thank you, everyone. I did see, I do see a Q and A let up on there.